This is the Commissioner meeting of November 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM at Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center, Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Director Fantasia.
Here.
Commissioner Fasano will be absent this evening. Commissioner Pacillo.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here.
At this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence and salute to the flag, and I ask that you keep in your thoughts this evening, with Veterans Day approaching, all of our veterans who sacrificed their lives for our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as for all.
Next is our public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notices defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975 have been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on September 15th, 2021, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey to the following: New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and has also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, I ask that you please mute all electronic devices. Number five is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda. So move. And a second.
Second.
Discussion. There is an additional item for executive session as item number eight, matter relating to employment relationship, public information. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and does any other commissioner have any other amendments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, just a motion to approve.
As amended.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, pass. Number six, proclamations, certificates, presentations. I need a motion to adopt the proclamations.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass. So for our first proclamation is A, recognizing November as National Hospice Month. We have Martina Sheding, Chief Operating Officer from Karen Anne Quinlan, and she is here to accept. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Yardley to please read and present that.
Sure.
Excuse me, Commissioner. If you'd like to.
Sure. Come on. hospice and patil- patil- patil-
Palliative care.
Palliative care. Palliative care community has met with this challenge and continue to serve the patients and families in need of the person-centered care they provide. And whereas more than 40 years hospice providers have helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, providing person and family-centered care in an increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones. And where the interdisciplinary team model at the core of the hospice involves a holistic approach to treatment, including expert medical care.
It's December 1st.
And symbolism.
It's Wednesday, December.
Do we, okay, I didn't know if you could hear. Simba, excuse me, medical care and system control, as well as attending to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and psychosocial needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas, 1.61 million Medicare beneficiaries living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. And in 2019, and whereas hospice care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want, and whereas the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice, and accessing to individualized services based on a patient's unique care, needs, and wishes. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of Commissioners, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by Newton, Sussex County, and New Jersey, do by proclaim November 2021 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life. Discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families and observe this month with the appropriate activities and programs. By the order of the Board of County Commissioners, Dawn Fantasia, Commissioner, Anthony Fasano, Deputy Commissioner, Sylvia Patillo, Herbert Yardley, and Chris Carney, Commissioners. Thank you. Before you, I would like to say one more thing. My mother spent time in hospice, some of my best friends who have moved on. It's a very thankful and emotional good thing. I wanted to present this.
You've already heard a proclamation with a lot of the details about hospice. We are the Karen Anne Quinlan Hospice. We've been in our communities for 41 years. We have two division licenses. We have four sites. We have about 100 patients we take care of and 100 staff. We are very, very honored and privileged to be able to do the care that we do do. And I also wanted to say thank you to the commissioners for proclaiming this. Even though the hospice benefit for many beneficiaries in Medicare that do receive the benefits, it is unique care, as was said in the proclamation. It's customized to the patient and family. But unfortunately, even though it's a six-months benefit, a lot of people don't know, and unfortunately, a lot of people come to us at the very end of their life-limiting illness. And when I say that, I mean it's nationally recognized, about 18 days is the median length of stay. But oftentimes, people come to us within days or hours. So the degree to which that we can get this information out and tell our communities about the benefits of specialized services such as hospice care, we always want to be able to do that. Mrs. Quinlan, who often comes and does receive the proclamation, she does regret that she cannot be here tonight, but we very much thank you. We also want to let you know that we have a hospice veteran partnership that is nationally recognized. We are at the highest level. It is five stars that we do have. We're at the fifth level. And this Thursday for November 11th for our veterans, we are doing a bag lunch in two of our locations at the Administrative Office in Newton and also up in Pike County. So between 11:30 and 1:00, we will be recognizing our veterans and providing them with a lunch. We'd like to get the word out about that as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
I also would like to mention that on December 1st, it's a Wednesday, at 7:00 PM at the Newton Green, there's a Lights of Life tree lighting and memorial service with the Karen Anne Quinlan Hospice. So please, if you would like to join, that would be lovely. Thank you. Okay, the remainder of the proclamations, I'll read the list, but we are not presenting them tonight because we are actually going out and presenting them at these specific events. We have a proclamation recognizing the Summit Rank of Katie Reed Miller, recognizing the work of the county's food pantry. And I just want to take a moment regarding the food pantry. In Sussex County, it provides emergency food assistance to our neighbors who are in need. They are currently seeking donations. Their most urgent pantry needs, you can probably guess, peanut butter and jelly, meals in a can, tuna cereal, mac and cheese, spaghetti, tomato sauce, soups, fruit, instant potatoes, rice. They also accept baby food and diapers and kid-friendly snacks and personal hygiene products as well. So if you would like to make a donation or even hold a food drive, you can always also reach out and contact at champions.charity@gmail.com. And if you're in need of assistance from the food pantry, you can call 973-383-3600. From May 30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday, they're located right on Spring Street in Newton. Also, D is recognizing Vincenzo Paolo La Plusa's Eagle Scout Court of Honor. And then we have E recognizing the 150th anniversary of the Franklin Band Concert. So I believe that Commissioner Yardley will be presenting at the Court of Honor for Vincenzo. I'll be presenting for the 150th anniversary of the Franklin Band because I live in Franklin and I love the Franklin Band. So I will be presenting that one. So moving on, we are on number seven, which is public hearings. We have none this evening. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item only. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name, municipality, and the specific agenda topic for the record. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comment on agenda items.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is now open for public comment on agenda items. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to make a motion to close the floor for public comment on agenda items.
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are on number nine, which is Commissioner's comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Carney.
Thank you, Director. I will be very, very brief tonight. Just a little update on our Sussex County Resurfacing Program. This particular job has been deferred till the spring. This was 34.36 miles of paving. This was awarded to Riverview Paving an amount of $10,773,923.57. Again, it'll be in the springtime. Personal note, Social Services put together a contest. I'll just read you this quickly. The Coalition for Healthy and Safe Communities and the New Jersey Herald teamed up once again this fall to hold the 21st Annual What's Your Anti-Drug Contest. This provided a wonderful opportunity for students to be county-wide role models by sharing their anti-drug through their original stories, artwork, poetry, or photographs. This also included a new component to include the younger kids, grades K through third, asking what makes you happy. Nearly 600 entries were received and 65 winning entries were selected to be featured in the New Jersey Herald A-page supplement to be published on November 8th, which was yesterday. The agency thanks everybody and all the children who were able to compete. I was actually lucky enough for my son to win, which I was very proud of. He didn't think he was gonna win, and his mom made him enter the contest, and he won. So I was a proud, proud dad. And just on one more note, personal note, I want to congratulate our director, my running mate, and my friend, Dawn Fantasia, for the election this past week. Looking forward to working with you for another three years. I think we're gonna get a lot of good stuff done and continue doing what we're doing, making this county great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Commissioner Patillo.
Thank you. I had the privilege of attending Newton's Flags of Honor Ceremony on Saturday. It was a very beautiful and a very touching service. On Sunday, I spoke at Post 278 Veteran Service in Stanhope. What an amazing group of patriots. You know, it used to be our World War II vets that were the big patriots in these posts, but now it's our Korean vets. But it was really, it's wonderful to go and spend time with your veterans. I don't care what age they are, what generation they come from, they are all amazing people. Veterans Day has a long and solemn history, and the event that inspired Veterans Day took place in a small railway car in a French forest. On November 11th, 1918, the Allied Powers and Germany signed an armistice that ended one of the bloodiest wars the world has ever witnessed. On that 11th hour of that 11th day of the 11th month, the guns fell silent and peace began to return to Europe. In 1919, President Woodrow Wilson declared November 11th as Armistice Day. Then in 1954, President Eisenhower signed a bill proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day, a day set aside to honor and salute the magnificent men and women who have worn the uniform of the United States of America. Today, if you want to know who our veterans are, just take a good look around your community. They are our fathers, mothers, our brothers and sisters, our friends and neighbors. They are just ordinary people who have done extraordinary things so we could be here today at our public meeting. There is no way to repay the enormous debt that we owe each and every one of our veterans. And although we set aside Veterans Day to give tribute to our heroes, we should remember them every day and be grateful for the courage and commitment that makes them so special. No matter what generation they are from, they are the strength of our nation and an inspiration to all of us. I know there are still more veterans programs that will be presented around the county, but I came tonight with an invitation from a PACON. Their Veteran Service will be on November 11th at 11:00 AM at their Veterans Park, which is on Flora Avenue. So if you'd like to attend, they would love to have you. And I just want to mention that these pins, every year we ask our students, we have a contest for them to design a pin for our veterans, and these are the 2021 pins. They were designed by Aaron J. Plugfelder, one of our students in Sussex County. Really, every year, and I think they can't do better, they do better. One pin is more beautiful than the next. So there's pins outside, if you would like to take one, if you'd like to give them to the veterans that you know, and there's also pins up here. Okay, moving on, I want to talk about election results. Sussex County currently has 117,790 registered voters. For early voting, that was from October 23rd to October 31st, it was at a PACON, Frankfurt, and Wantage locations. 3,396 ballots were cast in person. 57 provisionals were cast. Many of these were voters who didn't want to vote and use their mail-in ballot. The interesting thing was our new voting equipment received very positive reviews. Vote by mail, there were 7,523 vote-by-mail ballots that were cast. Five military ballots were cast. 50 signatures were rejected and sent for a signature cure. The signature cure gives someone's times to prove that that is their signature. Election Day, there were 42,505 in-person ballots were cast at the polls, using existing voting equipment but used the new electronic poll books. What's left to do? Well, Tuesday, November 9th, Board of Elections meeting beginning at 9:00 AM to review and count up to 62 vote-by-mail ballots that arrived timely and are valid. Review and count up to 645 provisional ballots. Updated results will be posted to the county clerk's website by close of business. Tuesday, November 16th, Board of Elections meeting beginning at 9:00 AM. Count any ballots in which the voters cured their signatures by Monday, November 15th. Certify results to the county clerk's office and post official results. Then on Monday, November 22nd, they will conduct audit of election results beginning at 9:00 AM. I just want to thank our election board and all of our poll workers who just worked diligently for very long hours, not just being at the polls and at early voting, trying to navigate through our new equipment, for those that are still continuing to count votes. And so we won't have the final official results until November 16th. Just a few more things that I've done. This is very, very important. It's our annual Stuff the Bus Food Drive to benefit the Sussex County Social Services Food Pantry. Clear Channel 103.7, WNNJ, and 102.3, WSUS will be hosting the 14th Annual Stuff the Bus Food Drive the weekend before Thanksgiving. Friday, November 19th, they will be at Lake Lamb Bank in Sparta. Saturday, November 20th, they will be at the Newton and Franklin Shoprite's. And Sunday, November 21st, at Byram and Sparta Shoprite's. If anyone is in need of food for themselves or their family, contact the Division of Social Services at 973-383-3600 during regular office hours, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. We have a couple of clinics. We have a women's health clinic that will be on Thursday, November 18th, from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing. If you would like to make appointments, please call 973-579-0570, extension 1246. There'll be a Child Health Conference Clinic will be held on Tuesday, November 16th, from 9:30 AM to 12:30 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing. The clinic offers complete physical exam screenings and age-appropriate amusations for children ages 0 to 5 years old that are without health insurance. To make that appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1246. And I think the rest are fine. We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Yardley?
Thank you. I want to talk about the Chamber Breakfast at that meeting. There were several charities there. The Catholic Charities, Project Self-Sufficiency, Norwest Cap, Market Street Missions, and Daisy. And each spoke, had an opportunity. Each one spoke about their mission and what they did, and I found it extremely informative. And I did ask some of the people in Social Services if they were aware of them and if they work with them, and we do. We do refer some of the people through the county. But it amazed me, the amount of services and the amount of not-for-profits in the county that provide services to our community. The Market Street Mission is relatively new to Newton, and they have a program for homeless men, which they have a facility in Morris County. Catholic charities, they do a whole lot of things, but they also do services for our veterans. It's really interesting how sometimes we wonder, do we have services in the county? And we have a lot of not-for-profits working throughout our county, and it was very enjoyable and very informative to hear this about the various communities and not-for-profits that work in the county on behalf of our residents. The other thing that's going on, the Economic Development Partnership has a economic develop- I should put the glasses on, Economic Development Awards Program, and they're going to recognize businesses, projects, organizations making significant contributions to Sussex County economy. And here are the categories, and you can apply until November Monday. I think you can submit a nomination to Monday. And here are the businesses, the areas you can be recognized in Business Advocacy Award, Business Expansion, Business Investment, Distinctive Leadership, Economic Innovation, Municipal Awards, New Business Awards, Past Chairman's Awards, Longevity Award, Training and Workforce Development Awards, and Redevelopment Awards. And there were also 16 new members that joined the chamber. Jenny's House, a little report on Jenny's House. They participated in a trunk-or-treat program and handed out about 500 bags of candy, which included signs and cards and information on how to report abuse. They attended Leno Peak Valley High School. They had all-day mental health fair and ran out of brochures. They had to go back several times because of the kids there that were all interested in reading and getting the brochures. And many kids stopped by, hung around the table, and asked a lot of questions. They are collecting gifts for their children that they serve and providing Thanksgiving holiday mails to the families, because many of the families are also indigent many times. So those are some of the things I want to talk about as we move into the holiday season. Let us not forget all those people that are in need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna begin tonight with some information from the Health Department. Atlantic Health System and Public Health Nursing partner to offer Moderna, J&amp;J, and the Pfizer vaccines. So the Office of Public Health Nursing holds their flu vaccination clinics at various locations throughout the county. And if you visit our county website, sussex nj.us, you can view clinic dates, times, and locations. As Commissioner Patillo has mentioned, some of the dates for women's health screenings, I'll get into, but as far as the specific pop-up clinics, on Wednesday, November 17th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and Monday, November 22nd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, there are two different locations. So on Wednesday, the 17th, it'll be at the Stanhope Fire Department, and on November 22nd, Hillside Barn in Andover. Now booster doses are available for some Pfizer, Moderna, and J&amp;J recipients. To receive any booster, you have to meet the eligibility criteria. And just to note, although the CDC allows people to get a different vaccine type than they originally received, it's recommended that you receive the same brand that you got out of the gate. When or if you decide to have a booster done, eligibility is based off your previous initial vaccine. So the New Jersey Department of Health reports that Sussex County residents administered a total of 181,629 vaccines. So that's 103,521 first doses, 85,139 are considered fully vaccinated because that includes the J&amp;J single dose, and 9,506 boosters have been given up to this point. Again, as a reminder, free-at-home test kits continue to be offered through Vault Medical Services. That's the saliva test, even for the younger kids, and for LabCorp, which is the traditional nasal swab, free for Sussex County residents, delivered to your home. You return, you receive your results online. Now, from our epidemiologist, we have some updates here. Our region continues to be code yellow, which indicates a moderate activity level. The past week, we were reporting about 45 cases daily, but then when I checked the Monday results for over the weekend, for three days, it was 89. So that was down to about 30. So I don't know if that's a trend that'll continue, but the latest report that I saw before this meeting was yesterday's, which was Monday, which is a consolidation. There are a total of 18,336 COVID cases, which represents about 13% of our population, total of 340 deaths in total. Hospitalizations in November thus far, we have 10. September showed a total of 42 hospitalizations, and October showed 69. So we're seeing a downward trend in hospitalizations at this point. There's currently 25 outbreaks in the county. One in an acute care facility, seven in our long-term care facilities of staff and residents, and again, we have 19, I believe, in our county in total, and 17 schools. Again, Delta variant seems to be the variant of choice. Anyhow, if you are interested and you feel that vaccination is right for you after speaking to your medical professional, you can visit sussex nj.us or call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 579-0570, extension 1211, for all information regarding COVID. Now, moving on to some other health updates, usually Commissioner Fasano handles a few of these, but in his absence, I just wanted to share, I discussed the New Jersey Seed Grant once, that's the early cancer detection, and they actually have programs for men and women. We have some really great brochures came from the Sussex County Office of Public Health Nursing for the seed program, and there's pamphlet for men and women, and they're widely distributed. But I want to tell you about a few specific services that are going to be offered. Again, as Sylvia had mentioned, on Thursday, November 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, if you go to Wheatsworth- if you go to Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg. Just to tell you what's available, there's thin prep pap test, pelvic exam, HPV testing, clinical breast exam, and colorectal testing. A fee of $25 payable by cash or check is collected for participants who are not seed-eligible, because there are income requirements that will be shared with you. Or you can look online and see if you fall within. If not, $25 is the cost. It's available to all Sussex County residents, but you have to pre-register. They're not accepting walk-ins. Also, we have them going into next year. And we have the monthly January, February, March, April, May, June. We have all of those dates as well, which I won't bore you with tonight with specs, because I doubt you remember. But we will post it. So you can take a look if you're interested also in going into New Year. So that is focusing primarily on women. But regarding men, it definitely focuses on colorectal cancer screening. It definitely seeks out for early awareness and prostate health. So if you can call 1-800-328-3838, you can find out how you would go about getting prostate screening and also for colorectal cancer. But there's a very informative, double-sided pamphlet here for men. I know we tend to focus, especially with October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we focus a lot on the female screenings that we do. But men, most people can attest that sometimes it's like pulling teeth to drag mails to the doctor at times. So if you want to be proactive, this is certainly the way to do it through the county. It's affordable. Or if you meet the income requirements, it's also free. I had one other mention. Oh, today. Today was the mayor's call. They received updates on the seed grants, also all of the COVID information. Normally, we report a little bit back from the mayor's calls. But being that it just happened at 3:00 today, I don't have a report. I didn't participate in that at 3:00 today. I was still at school. So we can get some of that information for everyone. Also, the New Jersey League of Municipalities Conference is down in Atlantic City next week. I know some commissioners are participating. We look forward to attending some of the workshops. Things are very different in a post-COVID or at the end of COVID. I mean, I'm trying to be optimistic here. But since COVID, this will be the first time that we're actually all together live at the league conference. And there's a lot of new case law, a lot of new things originating based on what has happened during the pandemic. So we're really looking forward to attending and bringing that information back in turn, keying it at the county, and then again to the public. So that is what I have this evening, with the exception of, again, Veterans Day is the 11th. Thank you for attending and bringing the pins. And thank you for your plans to attend the services during the day. I myself love Veterans Day at my school. We've never been closed. I know some schools sometimes will close. We don't close. And we always do a very, very big Veterans Day remembrance at my school. So unfortunately, I'll be in Bergen County and not in Sussex County on Veterans Day. But thank you for attending those events. And also, congratulations to Commissioner Carney. Now, it's official now. You're here three years. So I look forward to it. I know you work very hard. I think we're a diverse board. We each come from a different walk of life or a different field of experience to pull from, a different schema. And I think you bring a lot to the table with your experience with infrastructure. And I think we're going to work hard, and we're going to have a successful three years for the county. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Don, if I could say something, you were talking about COVID.
Yes.
I do want to, just want to say that I had the opportunity to go on Thursday to get my booster shot up at the health center. And pulled in, they took the information. And it had a pretty nice flow to it. You stood in line. You know, it was kind of moving. And I just wanted to say on the record that the nurses and the environmental staff that worked there did a great job, very well organized. You went in, filled your paper, had your conversation, and came out. Then you waited your 15 minutes to make sure you didn't have any problems. It was extremely cold. It was so cold, I think I had double coats on. And I wanted to just say that we have some very tough employees at the county, because there were the two young girls outside there saying, "Hi, here's a pen," and checking off your information. And they were in the shade, which made it even colder. But, and it was, we had a lot of fun talking to them. But they did a great job, and I just wanted to recognize that. And that should be just passed on to the board members, because I can at times be critical of the staff. And I just want to make sure that the positive gets back, and they're doing a great job. So I just wanted to mention that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes Commissioner's comments for this evening. We're moving on to number 10, which is the approval of the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is letters A through K. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the Consent Agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. So I need a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, A through K.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, pass. Number 11 is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, October 27th, 2021, and the executive session, October 27th, 2021. All are eligible to vote, with the exception of Commissioner Patillo, who is absent at that meeting. So I would need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and the executive session.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, Terry, I'm going to ask you to call the roll for this one because of Sylvia, please.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
And Commissioner Patillo.
Interesting. Thank you. Number 12, appointments and/or resignations. This is the appointment of Valerie Staccato as Public Agency Compliance Officer in and for the County of Sussex for the remaining calendar year to fulfill the unexpiring term of Emma Smith pursuant to public law 1975, C. 127, N. Jack 17, colon, 27. I need a motion to adopt this appointment.
Still move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes. Okay, next is number 13. It is the list of resolutions. We have resolutions A through Q. I need a motion to adopt resolutions A through Q.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? I myself would just like to bring your attention to Q, which is authorizing the County of Sussex and the County Administrator Gregory Poff to execute an authorization offering preliminary approval of a settlement in the national opioid lawsuit in support of an equal distribution of settlement funds within the state of New Jersey and participating local government, including the County of Sussex. This is something that we've been following for quite some time. We think that hopefully, if any money is able to be recouped from this, we would be able to then enhance our prevention and our treatment options here in the county. So I'm very glad to see this on the agenda tonight. So please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes. Number 14, awards of contract change orders and bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. I need a motion to adopt resolutions A through C.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Terry, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes. Okay, number 15, financial. I need a motion to pay the bills list.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? And again, to clarify, bills list, November 9th, 2021. Okay, Terry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes. Number 16, personnel. A resolution authorizing the personnel agenda of November 9th, 2021. I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
I have a question. I'd like to have the Deputy Director of Human Services position polled for the next meeting.
Okay, can you repeat that again?
The Deputy Director of Human Services, I have questions on that. I'd like to have that polled. So you can vote on that at the next meeting.
Okay. Does anyone oppose the amendment to adopt the personnel agenda with the tabling of the Deputy Director of Human Services?
I do.
You oppose?
Yeah. Herb, you've had how many weeks to talk about this before we got to the meeting? Why is it always at the meeting that we have to table it?
Well, the agenda, I think, came out of Friday before the meeting, the personnel agenda. Personnel. Well, if you want to talk about it.
Well, so, hold on. I mean, so there's a motion. I guess you guys can continue to debate it if you want to. I mean, there's a motion. So, Commissioner, is your motion, Ms. Patillo?
It's Herb's motion.
Herb's motion.
No, no, who made the motion to?
Oh, I made it to move.
Your original motion. He's asking to amend it. Commissioner Patillo rejected it. I mean, you can have a continued, so that, I mean, that's it from Robert's rules from perspective of amending that particular piece of the agenda. So Sylvia's motion, Commissioner Patillo's motion still stands at the moment. I mean, you can call a vote if you want to. You can continue to have the discussion. But the motion stands as it is. The attempt to amend it's been rejected.
Is there any discussion that is not able to be discussed in a public forum minus? Would we be able to, is this an option, to table for? No, we can't.
Yeah, what I'd like to suggest, Commissioner, if you're willing to consider it, is we could at least table it to have a discussion under the personnel portion of the executive session agenda. Because I'm not exactly sure what we want to get into. We can always come back out into regular session where we're done and take action then.
That's fine.
Just to protect the integrity of the process.
Okay. Now, just to also specify, this is just a question. This is on the agenda. This positions individuals on the agenda. But to discuss that in executive session, is there notice required? Or we're discussing the position?
Yeah, it's a position. And it's not presently occupied, I don't believe. Correct? Yeah, so we're fine.
Okay.
So you'd be moving the personnel agenda, Commissioner, with that piece removed, which will be discussed in executive?
That piece for discussion for executive with potential to vote upon reentry.
Correct.
Okay, so I need a motion to adopt the personnel agenda with the Deputy Director of Human Services position to be moved into executive session this evening with potentially introducing and moving on it and returning from executive session this evening back to public session.
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Director Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes. Number 17 is the administrative report from Administrator Poff.
Thank you, Director. We are continuing the development of the 2022 county budget. Capital budget hearings have started and will continue throughout the end of this week. The Capital Projects Committee at its meeting yesterday had suggested a tour of a few of the bridges that were discussed by the Department of Engineering and Planning. And so a tour of several of those bridges has been tentatively set for Monday, November 15th, to assist the committee with its deliberations. As Commissioner Carney indicated, the 2021 resurfacing program has been put on hold for winter operations. Construction is anticipated to recommence on or about April 15th, 2022, following the expiration of the winter construction moratorium. In the Economic Development Partnership, I'm working with the EDP Director Tammy Horstfield and Community College President John Connolly in the advancement of data collection and research in support of the partnership's goal of recruitment, retention, and expansion of business within the county. And as the director had mentioned, I would encourage everybody to visit the county website to get additional information on the continuation of pop-up clinics at several locations throughout the county, where not only the seasonal flu vaccine is available, but also COVID-19 vaccinations and booster shots will be made available at those pop-up clinics as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 18 is county council report.
Yes, Director. I've distributed, I started to distribute anyway, both an internal and external report. I have copies for Commissioner Patillo and Commissioner Carney, which I'll give to you when we get to executive. Nothing glaring, except I would like to update you. We had, I had had discussions with Morris County Council relevant to renegotiating a provision in the contract between Morris and Sussex Counties for the provision of inmate beds. If particular contract contingencies were met, we met them. I opened, entertained some discussions with Attorney Napolitana, who's the Morris County Council. Morris County Council has agreed to modify the contract. It's a savings, a contract savings of roughly $121,000 a year to the county. I'll have a draft contract for you for the next meeting. I had one for you today, but I realized I have a typo which I have to fix. So I will fix it and have it back for you next meeting.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, number 19, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that a commissioner wishes to discuss? Number 20, new business? Any new business?
Just an update I have. I could have brought this up before, but I'm bringing it up now. So on the voter integrity resolution that we passed months ago, just an update, as of right now, we have six municipalities that passed it as well. Those are Frankfurt, Franklinboro, Monique, Sparta, Wantage, and Branchville. And I believe tomorrow Lafayette has a meeting. It's on their agenda. Again, I ask you guys if you can reach out to your municipalities and, you know, maybe ask again if they could do the same. It's very important. I myself, when I voted, I was able to get my license, and they were very, very happy. They scanned it. My name came up, my address, the whole nine yards. It made it very easy. Actually, the one person, one poll worker thanked me for doing that. So again, that's where we're at. It's getting some movement now, and I'm going to continue this. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to number 21, which is the public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. Please state your name and municipality for the record. So I need a motion to open the floor for public comment on non-agenda items.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the floor is now open for public session on non-agenda items. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number 22, reminders. Please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. I think we say that more than anything. If you were to go through our recordings, we probably say the county website address 15 times. That's what I think. So I think if the public needs something, go to our website. Okay, we're moving on to 23, executive session. It's a closed session. A resolution providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with provisions of NJSA 10,412. Terry, please.
Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners. As an exception to the open public meetings act pursuant to NJSA 10,412B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved at the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10,412B and NJSA 10,413, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded. And be it further resolved, that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10,412B is designated. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege opioid litigation, Grinnell Dam. Number eight, matters relating to employment relationship, personnel policies, and public information. Be it further resolved at the deliberations conducted in Be it further resolved, that the deliberations conducted in closed sessions may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved, that upon the completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board may resume its meeting open to the public. I guess at this point, we just need the motion.
Okay. Motion, please, to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we are now adjourning from general session and entering executive session. Thank you for coming. Please get home safe.
We have resumed open session. The time is 7:51. Someone would make a motion to resume open session?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Now, because the Director Fantasia was unable to stay for the remainder of the meeting, we need to, in accordance with the administrative code, designate a Director Pro Tem. And the method to do that is through an election of the available current members here at this meeting. So if someone would like to make a motion to nominate for the purpose of the completion of this meeting and signing meeting documents, Director Pro Tem?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Sylvia Patillo as Director Pro Tem.
And I'll second that.
I guess a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any other nominations? I have to say that.
Make a motion to close the nominations.
I'll second that.
And now we have a motion, there was a topic with respect to Deputy Director and the Personnel Agenda that was carried into executive session. Is there a motion to adopt the Personnel Agenda, including the Deputy Director? Help?
Still move.
I'll have to second that.
I'll do a roll call. I'm just going to simply go down the table. Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yes.
Director Fantasia is absent. Director Fantasia, it's not always absent for the record, and Commissioner Yardley?
I'll abstain.
Two out of the three, they did a big passing. The time is now 7:53. We just need a motion then to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
The meeting is over.